Alright, evening everybody, welcome to the town letter inland water course fishing meeting Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Start meeting time seven zero five secretary please call roll.
Justin.
Present.
Present.
See him, but if he can't answer them.
Oh, when we talk some excuse Corey Wafer and Ron Grayber.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're not set here for public comments. Do I have anybody from the public who wishes to address the commission? If so, please state your name and your address. Okay, here none will move on to our first item of old business, which is.
I wonder if the microphone is working for people online. Can I just test something? Eric Paul, can you hear us? Can you ask Eric?
And this Mr. Mr. Paul, Gary Paul. Can you say something else here? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll see anyone three to seven or two seven present run drive and yell sperry. Which for alleged unpermitted activity violation of letter IWC regulations on the property is Jennifer and Thomas Hepburn. Right, so the last meeting we discussed that we had the initial photos and separate. Crawford, I believe you're out there to observe some since we sent the letter, I want to just read the letter here that we sent. So dear Mr. Mrs. Hepper, it's come the attention of the commission that various material and debris have been dumped in and or near a portion of the water course identified as Thompson Brook that runs through your property located two seven present run drive. Has been further alleged that the placement of this material may be effectively altering the flow of water resulting in flooding to a portion of a neighboring property. The commission was shown photographs of the material located near the roof to support the claim. They are attached to this letter. Which can be viewed on the screen. Please be advised according to town of letter Connecticut inland wetlands map, a portion of your property is within a regulated wetlands area as shown below. In accordance with section two of IWC regulations, terms and definitions, any deposition of material or any obstruction, alteration, or pollution of a wetlands or water course is considered a regulated activity. Additionally, any activity involving deposition of material which will or may have a substantial effect on the wetland or water course or on wetlands and water courses outside the area. Or any activity which substantially changes the natural channel or may inhibit the natural dynamics of a water course system is considered a significant impact. Section six point two of the regulation states, no person shall conduct or maintain a regulated activity without first obtaining a permit for such activity from the inland wetlands water courses commission of the town levy letter or its designated agent. Section six, three of the regulation states, any person found to be conducting or maintaining a regulated activity without prior authorization of the IWC or agent or violating any other provision of these regulations shall be subject to the enforcement proceedings and penalties prescribed in section fourteen of these regulations than any other remedies provided by law. Therefore, you are hereby ordered to cease all unpermitted regulated activity of two seven peasant run drive for being in violation of letter IWC regulations referenced above. All material and relocated within the water course of the new wetland shall be removed and a previous direction of flow for this portion of the book restored. They are correct this violation and carry out the actions directed in this notice and the result in the issuance of a cease and desist order municipal citating with fines in accordance with hundred zero one four or other enforcement proceedings authorized under chapter four forty water course wetlands and water courses of the Connecticut general statutes. Signed by myself, Brooke, and this letter was dated December sixteenth of two thousand and twenty one. Thanks. So previously saw those photos. Did you did you witness earlier in the photos that you saw this offered?
Um, I noticed that there's debris in the water. And you can see where the two different waterways are. The one that goes behind two houses down from her goes this way. There's a little stream and then it goes between the stone wall. There's brush block there. But on the other side, she maybe walk over a little bridge that she made. And you can see the water coming down from like by Nathan Lester house and all that stuff comes down and it's blocked there too.
Is all the debris that we previously saw still in place?
Yes, it is.
Do you see any response from the letter we sent?
No, I haven't. I'm still concerned that this isn't picking up the this pick up him at all. Um, I haven't gotten any response.
Okay.
All models did I chat that is methods that he can hear.
Yeah, here's the picture I took today.
That's a lot.
A little carpet. So this is here is right here and that's where the turn comes into the in that's in back of first wall. And that's a concrete like pole or pipe.
No, it's not a actually a log.
Yeah, that's that's a concrete pipe. And there's two of them there. I was like, wow. And that's where it comes down. Yeah, it comes down and over.
Okay. Debris, construction debris.
And then that's so so that it goes this way. I mean, that bridge, but it's blocked by this tree in the bucket and whatever else is in that mess. I was like, man, I'm gonna go swimming.
So what is the diverted channel?
There's two diverted channels.
Okay, so that's what you were saying?
Yeah, so there's one. So this one. This is right in back of her house and it goes across the street over. And then this is blocking this spot.
Okay, so this is a whole diverted channel?
Yeah. Yep, so this goes.
How deep do you think that was?
I say maybe that much.
Does look like he's trying to fill this up.
So this is behind her house.
Okay.
And then back in the day, the zoning guys told her to build like a little dam kind of thing and it goes this way. But there's an open spot and it goes this way. And this is where so all this supposed to have water in it. And it goes right to the stone wall where the ladder is and all that stuff. So that's block and then where all of this debris is is right next to that on the other side of the stone wall is all this and then there's another one that comes from up here downward that's blocked from this side. So there's two different waterways that are blocked. And it's supposed to go literally cross through the woods over and it goes down between two houses down more that goes into the reservoir. So there's there's two blockage.
Good, the affirmation that the letter was received certified now.
That's a world control.
So we discussed at our previous meeting was first submission of the the aforementioned letter. So.
Yes, sir. Yeah, um, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just got your letter maybe Sunday. I wasn't even home. A friend was babysitting my dogs for me and sign that letter for me. So I got that letter over the weekend and I've been working. I work at the prison. I just got off work today. So the turf sets on the side of that house. That was from a project that I didn't finish. So tomorrow I will get that out of the way. Um, as far as in the back of that pond, there was a tree and some limbs and stuff that fell over and blocked that creek. Um, I've been I've been clearing that creek all year. Every storm we have, it's blocked by a tree or something that's back there. So I didn't know that was blocked. I will. I will get to that clearing that too, but um where that turf is. I how was I don't understand how that's blocking any waterways either way anyway. I'm gonna move it, but I don't know how that's blocking any of that that brook.
Alright, so what we have in addition to like the the blockers that was being reported to us here. It's positive bunch of construction debris here is what we're seeing in the creek. So this is intentionally placed debris into the wetlands. It's removed. So and you're gonna have some natural trees fall and brush is gonna grow in there.
So um, what what other things were were blocking it besides that turf and the debris that was beside the tree and stuff? Because the pictures that I got, I can't. I couldn't see exactly what I'm supposed to be looking at in that picture. I just saw a bunch of blocked up water. Um, there were some bricks in the one pitcher. The bricks are that's not that's not even in my property. So I don't know where those bricks came from.
Okay. Is that another adjoining lot to the rear view?
Yeah, well, the property where those bricks are, I'm pretty sure that's my neighbor who took the pictures because I don't I don't let my kids go past that creek because that's not. I don't think that's part of my property there. Those bricks were there when I moved there.
Do we know exactly what the property lines in this area are?
Nope, you'd have to update your GIS maps. Sorry. Not exact.
Okay. Um.
Alright, so so what I'd say, thank you for joining our meeting here to to address this with us, sir.
Yeah, no problem.
Alright, so we'll take a look at the the property maps here. We can identify who's owns the property, which would be to the rear of this creek. If it's not him, if it's open space or town property or another resident.
The behind my property is the Pheasant Run Association. But um, in the picture that the neighbor had sent you, you can see some bricks out of there. I don't think that's my property line, but that and that was there when I moved there. If it ends up being my property line, I'll get the bricks out of her, but I never touched them because I didn't think that was my 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 property.
I think he should just focus on that construction debris that he does know this.
Right, yeah, yeah, I can. Yeah, I'll take. I'll take care of that debris. Like I said, today was my first day off, so this week I'll I'll clear that tree out of there and it's like that bucket's not mine. That came with the storm, but like I said, I clear that that broke three or four times a year after every storm.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I'm satisfied. If you can remove the debris that, you know, you place there is like, you know, for factors on your property.
Yep.
Uh, we can look into the for the rest of the debris is you said present run association. They become a property owner or does that become open space with the town?
It's the probably was the required open space for the subdivision. So I'm not sure who who retained ownership sometimes through the homeowners association, sometimes town, sometimes that will need us. I'd love to see on this.
Yeah, I think that's something we can look at there.
Yeah, because I know that there's the cove above where you guys where they live. And I don't know if it went down or because there's houses on the top of the hill. Feel like up the top of the hill.
Right. Alright, uh, I'm happy with that. Your willingness to address this, I'd say, when you say you're gonna remove it sometime this week?
Yeah, that that turf I'll take care of that tomorrow. Like I said, I have. I'm off tomorrow, so I'll take care of that. Um, as far as responding to the letter, I I tried to call the town to get the hold of Justin. I ended up talking to Mike Cherry.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm Justin here. I volunteer, so I'm not staffed at the town all day long.
Yeah, so Mike Mike Cherry is the one who told me about this meeting tonight, so.
Alright, so I guess one thing, Mr. Wofford, would you be would you be willing to take a look with them and be willing to if Mr. Wofford, he lives nearby, one of our commission members, he just come by and to close the matter?
Yeah.
How about over to I over to you?
Is that is that alright with you, Mr. Hepper?
Repeat that again?
If we had Mr. Wofford, one of our commission members, he went to your neighbor's property to take photos over here today. If he could just come by, verify that you removed it so we can close the matter?
Yeah, yeah, that's absolutely fine.
Okay.
I appreciate that. You need to make a motion on this or we yeah, it's all right. Appreciate your willingness to work with us here, Mr. Hepper.
Yeah, 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 anytime.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
He'll be fine.
Sometime in the world.
If he says sometimes.
This week, a little later in the week.
Yeah, that works.
Very much, yeah. Then we'll look into the rest of the debris.
We might have his number if you call Mike though.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll look into the rest of the debris. See what was that property so we can get that taken care of. Alright, so thank you, Mr. Hepper.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's the whole business. Move on to new business. We have a new application here tonight to one dash one nine for one twenty five Wellhead Road, lot number four in Galesbury, Connecticut. Open review permit to replace existing mobile home with new plugged mobile home on a new concrete pad fifteen by sixty seven replacing steps constructing deck moving oil tank and replacing it with propane.
Good evening, Chairman. Um, I think I submitted some extra of a map, a little bit more updated. If I may come up as a full size map here. Why they doing that? I'll give you these. This is a hard copy of Ian Cole's soil scientist report. Uh, he did the updated flagging and I just put these in here just so that, oh, you got it. So you understand what the concrete pad, I just put these in here. Understand what we typically do is we dig down uh, just down to get the top soil out. Then we pour a six inch pad, try to have two inches above the soil so that when you're weed whacking, when there's a lawn, you're not ruining the skirting. So you really only, you know, going into the ground.
Nobody can see him do that. So if you're gonna I don't know why this owl isn't following, but if you go to that screen and point to whatever you're doing.
So this area right here, can we now zoom into this corner? See this area right here? This is lot four. The wellens is down here. The nearest point is sixty one feet, but there's also a close up up in here somewhere.
Where do you hear it?
Right here. Right here. So this is the existing home right here. This is the existing carport and the existing overhang. I think some of the pictures show that what we're proposing is this point here is the existing home point. We held this point, go a little bit wider and a little bit longer. And then we're gonna put a deck and stairs, a deck and stairs eliminate all this impervious or pervious. I get always get that backwards. So we're actually decreasing the uh, flow, but the only difference is we'll have a concrete pad under the home. And again, it really only disturb about four inches of soil, topsoil, and then grade it and pour a concrete slab to meet the HUD code, today's tie downs, all that kind of stuff. Um, if we could, can we get back down to the big one? So again, this is the existing home. That's just the so here it is here. Um, we have a traditional two seventy five bug ground oil tank back here, which obviously is taboo in today's. So um, this particular home that we're gonna replace, it's got a electric heat, so it doesn't even uh, but now we use propane and all over here is your newly flagged well, which is very similar to the the one that was done twenty two years ago where it starts, you know, I think Rich just carried it right through here. Where Ian has no effect on us. It's just that we're inside the hundred foot upward review area. So and I asked you to bring the nearest dimension, which is sixty one feet from here for this corner inside the hundred foot upward view area. Uh, and when obviously put a row of hay bales, uh, that's what it is we're working. Everything else that you see exists today, even this home exists today. This is a fence, the sheds. Obviously, there's a lot of debris that we're gonna clean up and everything. But this is certainly nicer than the hand sketch we had last month. So we tried to clean out at the soil side of the report that I those pictures were just kind of described. The pad looks like.
Do we need to worry about?
It's all talking. Is there any?
I'm sorry.
Is there any fuel left in the oil tank that you're leaving?
Be cool, I think I I will know that we get it out of there. This is a complicated scenario. It starts with wetlands, but it also goes through the tax collector's office because the folks that live there owed back taxes. I just bought the park trying to clean it up, but so I have to kind of go through all these different scenarios. Because the one of the owners passed away, the other owner is in a nursing home. The back taxes, the mayor, just like we did on the one out that that one right there on Atlanta Hill that burned. The mayor waved the back taxes. I bought the home for a dollar. And then we start the process of getting rid of. So I end up having to pay to remove it, but it also saves time. But they just coincidentally both happen to be in upward review areas. But the building inspector and I did shake the tank. There's a little something in there, you know. Yeah, I I like to get rid of them too, you know, it's.
I just want to make sure that like wherever his name is not gonna spill in a buzz. Leaving into what ones are.
Yeah, I just want to get as much of that junk out of there.
Do you typically drain it first or?
But again, I don't want it right now. It's kind of in limbo between really the town technically um, has the right to the taxes to the home. So I have to get that right before I can, you know, touch it.
You don't own the property yet?
I own the I own the land that are on the home or the contents or the exterior parts. It's a mobile home park, so I just.
I got you. A complication of this.
Tom knows it. There before.
I just ownership, I understand Mr. Cohen's land, but with the home itself.
I guess he has owns the area that he's going to be working in.
Yeah, I own the whole thing. I just lease pieces of it in as mobile home parks. You just lease a piece. Um, and we're eliminating all oil tanks as we as we start to buy these parks. You know, our new lease calls free the propane or electric.
Okay.
Your main concern is safeguarding the wetlands when he scrapes the earth, the pour the pad. So if you feel those hay bales and whatever.
Yeah, what are you doing with the the soil that you're moving?
I'm sorry, my hearing is terrible.
Sorry, the masks. What are you doing with the soil that you're moved?
So well, typically we only really take down just a bunch of topsoil and we just kind of spread it around or just grade away. So we don't have any water gets on get underneath the home. You want to just it is. It's so it's very, very minimal. As you can see in that picture, the second picture right here, this was the finish. We just did it with wood chips. Uh, right here, you know, you just want to kind of shed the water away from it.
I'm okay.
Yeah. I don't really have an issue.
And none of this can proceed until he actually takes ownership of the home, the mobile.
Yeah.
If you're gonna grade it.
I mean, in theory, in theory, you know, if you're gonna try to be two inches above the grade, you want to just kind of shed it all the way around. I mean, it's it's so miniscule. It would be two inches so that, you know, if you came out of a foot, it would be, you know, a quarter of an inch to the foot. It would, you know, it would feel level to the, you know, to the field. It's just the pad has to be relatively level. Doesn't have to be perfectly level. You just go with the contour because when they level the mole home, they level it. You don't notice it underneath. They just.
More comments with staff?
No, I was more concerned that we had a you know, a more official map and the wetlands support. From this one scientist, the first map was a while ago.
Yeah.
And we couldn't find it.
Mayor. It was much easier to just do it this way.
Since you did, if you approve it way back when, we just didn't.
If you're.
We found the minute, not the map.
All kinds of fun because this is up under viewer. I'm gonna prove it tonight. We just accepted.
Uh, you have to wait that thirty days.
Okay. So. One, two, four.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the.
Motion. We'll we'll accept this tonight. Just when we can classify it as significant. Tonight. Yeah, so the motion would be to accept it.
Except the application of the not significant impact. Didn't you already decide a significant last time?
We did not. This is the application. It was a little for hazard break last time. So it was not an hazard break.
Yeah, I thought you added something else that was in that. Does not not an area.
Yeah. So. It's hard to appear. This is not significant.
If I recall, I thought it was just that it was not an hazard right. I thought because my last one, I thought wasn't as a raise. Then I went back and I was my bad. I checked. And then that's why we filled out the new application, right?
Yeah, so I moved to accept this application as a non-significant impact.
Alright, motion by Mr. Piller, except application is not significant impact.
I'll second that.
It was really all favor.
Alright.
Miss.
Thank you very much. So basically come back.
Yeah, so our next meeting, February first Tuesday, February.
Yeah, but I mean, then it's just a vote and then how long before you have to publish it?
It's not a public hearing, so as long as it's not a significant impact, which they've now said it isn't, and as long as twenty people don't petition to have a public hearing. They make their decision and then you fifteen days.
Close to fifteen days.
I just was curious how much different it was than if you if you just signed something, you know, like as the agent.
It's it's fairly straightforward from here.
Got to hire somebody.
We do.
Makes everybody's life. Thank you very much for everything.
You're welcome.
If somebody doesn't petition within the if somebody doesn't petition between now and then, you're pretty safe because you know, once it's approved, that nobody's gonna do it after the fact. So that second fifteen days.
You just give me a list of petitions.
Yeah. Go on.
Right, moving along. What is the official report? So we have an official report for this month?
You don't have a weapon.
Do everyone's actions aside from what we do here in the commission?
I might would have to, I don't know. Yeah, that's a, I don't believe there was. I'm trying to think what applications came in, you know, I mean, so nothing, very little.
Yeah, I'm satisfied every week you have mentioned.
He would have called you if there is or one of us would have called if he did a signature.
Correspondence, correspondence for the month. Announcements, we have the announcements.
You voted on the budget last time, right?
We did that in November. Meeting approval for regular meetings. It's December seventh, which you all have the opportunity to review. Looking for motion to approve it, approve of amendments.
Also move.
I'll move to approve.
To move to approve the previous meeting minutes?
Alright, we approve our second, my Mr. Piller, all in favor?
Alright.
All in favor? Right?
Paul just said yes.
Thank you.
Let you test it.
Yes.
He's on the chat. We'll take it. We'll take it.
He can hear us. He can hear us.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, on meeting review, yeah. Technology, use it to our advantage. Uh, we just, we all, so we're down here, uh, do our best here to be punctual, we just start the meeting five minutes late. So we're waiting for form. We, we, we all got, if, if you're running late, just. Something like that, just, like, we had Mr. Cohen waiting, buddy that was waiting on Zoom, so we just let him know, say, hey. We understand we're late, people are coming.
Paul, he apologized to. Thank Paul.
I will double check to see if Mike has any permits, I've been, I've, I've been out of the office as well, so.
Okay.
Should have, to write some, you know, something down, but if he didn't, that makes me think that there probably wasn't.
Yeah, like I said, you didn't mention anything, I've been coming in every week. Yeah. As I said, if, if you happen to be running late like that, I think y'all, I always reply with my phone, never shoot me a message. Just, anybody we have in attendance.
Yes.
All right, last meeting is a jerk, item is adjournment.
Actually, there is one thing that I would like to bring up. Um. While, oh, the language on the meeting information page is clear that. Hey, you can join the meeting via Zoom. I did find it mildly confusing that it didn't meant that it wasn't made clear that it was a mixed meeting. And. There are some people may prefer to come in, in person instead of digitally. May also find it confusing, if in the future, or the posted minutes. We could make it that, hey, this is a hybrid meeting, you can either come in person or. Join as Zoom, I think that would be preferable.
I guess the mayor's preference is the public kind of attend via Zoom, if, if you're gonna be here, the idea is really to actually go to Zoom, until this passes again, but.
Yeah, because I know they just posted a calendar. Gary, can you? Hear me?
Yeah.
I know somewhere they posted a calendar, and it says all the town meetings, what they are, so if it's virtual.
I read it.
Yeah, it's all in the calendar.
Well, I know they're trying to get everything on Zoom right now, because of what's going on, so.
Gary talked about making that notice? Has he been too many would make that notice?
He did.
To move all meetings to Zoom?
Well, he, he, I've emailed everybody that's suggesting that, um. Explaining why, I mean, it's. Not promoting that everybody can come in person, I know that you all tend to meet in person, but I'm certain I can just throw it out there to the public that they should come in person.
Okay, so, so we, we, we're not, we're not coming out with another mandate that we're gonna be hundred percent virtual, as we were asking?
I haven't heard if he's gonna do that, I think the email just says, suggests that, that, you know. It does allow for hybrid, because you and the ZDA tend to be. Persons, but, which, we're directing, well, the.
Ludite, I think, is the term.
Yeah. Everybody else to join you, you know.
The Ludite destroyed technology, we're more like the Amish slowly accepting that which is useful.
If there is nothing else, the last item on here is adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Piller?
Seconded.
Seconded, everybody, all in favor? Meeting adjourned, time, seven, three, eight.
All seconded, too.
Appreciate everybody's time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Do you want these folders back? And, and it, sure, thank you.
I can say, I can use mine.